Uh, coming the North Public Schools meeting to order for Wednesday, October twenty-third, October twenty-fourth. Uh, first up on, fans, pleasure season, bye.
I am in the United States of America and to be part of this dance, one nature, a hundred thousand, and that is all of the eleven eight and just before.
Uh, we should be recorded by North Media and North Public Schools. If anyone else is recording, please let us know. Um, just a quick thing before we get to the agenda. Uh, just happy to, uh, kind of for our first true meeting, uh, since the tragic loss of one of our students, Lily and Costello, a seventh grader at North Middle School, which wanted to invite everyone to join me in honoring her with a, uh, welcome science. Uh, in the face of such a tragedy, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to our superintendent, Jennifer O'Neal, our director of counseling and therapy services, Vinnie Cersei, uh, North Middle School principal, Vinnie Hayward, and our entire administrative team. Uh, I also wanted to send my thanks to chief of police Brian Clark and our dedicated school resource officers Jake Bennett and Mark Riverside. Our community partners, uh, uh, the health and wellness center led by Nicole, Corinne, Victoria, and Linda, and also the community counseling's of Bristol, uh, sorry, community counseling of Bristol County and Riverside Trauma, who have been invaluable in providing essential and ongoing support to our students and staff. Special thank you goes out to our teachers, staff, and students who came together during this very challenging time, ensuring that everyone had a space and support to grieve in their own way. I recognize that there are many others who have also contributed, and I want to send, uh, thank you to all of you as well. And immensely proud of our community and the school district having met in such a difficult moment. Please continue to reach out to one another. Your support is invaluable, truly can make a lot of difference. Thank you all. Uh, first up on the agenda is to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four open session meeting. Has everyone got a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any returns, anything typical model? A motion to approve the minutes?
Over.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh. Uh, what? Have reviewed the food, the family warrants, school expense line, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, eighty-one cents. October ninth, twenty-twenty-four, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. School payroll warrants, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, one million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and nineteen cents. October thirteenth, twenty, uh, I'm sorry, October third, twenty-twenty-four, one million, two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, thirty-six cents. I wish to enter them in a public market.
Sure. Uh, straight up up there. Good evening, everybody. Um, the JCS, the students at JCS are looking forward to a Halloween celebration next week. And all three K, the third grade students are invited to bring their classes to school, which is going to be great with their grade levels. One of our teachers, Jen, early, and our SBO are organizing a JCS families, along as part of the going chart of a Halloween parade this Sunday, October twenty-eighth. Finally, the JCS community is planning to have a flag ceremony to celebrate remembering veterans. Veterans Day on the morning of Friday, November eighth, we invited family members and JCS students who need your veterans to join us, and we are hoping to also present them in a few years. Up in your school, uh, it's a very busy time in our high school. All sports wrapping up the regular seasons with every team. Place take postseason tournament. Puffins already wrapped up. They're probably most successful season in North's history. The golf team was national champions and placed seventh in the D-two state championship. Congratulations to Coach Lightning and the whole team. October has been, has been and will finish as a key month of future planning. And high school juniors and seniors attended the holiday for more than sixty schools and universities, juniors, ESATs this week. To give everybody an exposure to tests necessary for post-secondary education. Next week's, next week sophomores will have a career day, and then opportunity to get about twenty-five different local businesses and organizations about potential careers. Although, all of the month, various local businesses and military recruiters have been setting up a gap year very much, providing job applications and information. Speaking of the head, we just finished up our APTO's elastic book fair, which was a huge success this fall. Helped to refill and keep filling up our book vending machine, deciding book choices for our students. On almost a daily basis, we give out about five points with the students, which the students use in the APTO book vending machine. Hey, students are on hashtags by showing our PBIS expected behaviors of being respectful, responsible, and safe, and working hard by an adult being kind, supportive, bringing them amazing effort. Students are always doing such great work, practicing stuff, and making the basic point of seeing this behavior, not looking at and celebrating without giving these students hashtags. When students have accumulated their first fifty, they hand them for a point. For every one hundred, after students can get a point. A little over a month, students have earned over a hundred books. It has been sensational and has shown how positive our students are. We have also continued our practice of hashtag good news call of the day. For any adult nominated student for going above and beyond and be deserving, but, close this hashtag. I'm gonna be at CFTD. So far this year, we have already done sixty good news calls. The students also on that would fall by for a point for a book on our vending machine. So as you can see, our students are doing sensationally and earning a lot of books. On Monday, October twenty-eighth, on Monday, October twenty-eighth, our APTOs bring in author George Chen to do two presentations once each grade on how he comes up with ideas for his books and how he develops some writing and should be the reason.
Very much. Uh, opening of school remarks, all right.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to, to do this tonight. I appreciate all your hard work, obviously, for our, our school community. Uh, so little school, big heart is off to a great start this year. Uh, so here I am in my third year in North Public Schools, and despite obviously the obstacles we sometimes face in the school community, I couldn't be happier to be here at LGN in Door. Uh, I had a superintendent years ago told me, I was a new principal, and he said, it sometimes takes five to seven years to really get going as a school, to, for people to buy in, believe in you as a principal, to trust you. Uh, we've worked hard over the last two years, going into this third year, to build that trust as a team, and it's really kind of showing its, its fruits, uh, at this point. Uh, we're really getting going as a school community. It's a testament to the unbelievably hard work of our engineers and staff here at LGN, as well as the continued support of our students' families. Uh, we've had a lot of district initiatives over the last few years, as you know, new math curriculum, stepping stones. We get, uh, ELA curriculum and into reading, uh, a new social emotional learning curriculum program, and character strong. Uh, and we continue to build on the efforts of IMTSS that we started three years ago, even if it's in smaller increments at this, at this point. Uh, the adoption of and implementation of these programs depends on the dedication, as you know, and the success of our teachers. Um, I can't speak highly enough about our team here. Uh, back to my popular demand this year, or maybe I'm just crazy, our school's video morning announcements. Um, one of the few good things that come out of the COVID shutdown, I continue to record a three to five minute video each morning, uh, to start our school day. Uh, we recite the pledge of allegiance, the LGN pledge, which includes our PBIS language and, and expectations of being respectful, responsible, and safe. Marty would say hashtag respectful, responsible. The daily happenings of our, of our little school. So we aim to include as much student voice as possible with segments. Um, as part of the digital equity team last year, I, uh, wrote a program in terms of our morning announcements and trying to get our kids more involved each day. Last year, we took some steps with our tasty tidbit segment. Uh, Mr. Place, our music teacher, was kind enough to write a jingle for it. Um, I encourage you to go on YouTube and watch, watch our videos. They're pretty hilarious at times. Um, and this year we have segments such as hate pink, Mrs. Hannah, which is second graders, um, do arriving middle every Wednesday. We have, uh, funny Friday jokes brought to us by siblings here at our school. Um, so a lot of fun things are going on each morning. Uh, we also celebrate birthdays each day. Uh, each student receives a book of their choosing to keep in order to celebrate their special day. Uh, our PTC, your parent teacher connection, works to support this initiative as well as many others. Uh, we have many new board members this year who are bringing fresh ideas and energy to our already robust parent group. They hosted a very successful falls elastic book fair two weeks ago, and even invited a lot of brothers ice cream truck to be here on our parking lot during family shopping, which, um, really helped our, our, our sales, and our teachers love the ice cream. Um, PTC is also helping to kick off our booster thon fundraising on Monday. I'm excited for that. Booster thon is actually going to come and run that program for us, uh, because our PTC board is fairly new and hasn't seen it in operation. Uh, but the fundraiser is such a, a great event for our school, brings in a lot of money into fundraiser, and that will be held on Friday, November eighth. Kids are always excited for that. I'm excited for that. I'll make a big deal of it. Um, a couple of other important initiatives that we started this year include our critical attendance team. Uh, newly formed after the chronic absenteeism committee did some important work this summer to improve our students' attendance. Our school team meets twice a month at this point to discuss working with the tiered supports we have in place for students and their families. Um, we hope to see, uh, an improvement in that as the year goes on and the years go on. We've also begun a really fun morning movement program, thanks to our wellness physical education teacher, Mrs. Kenny, called EASE, E-A-S-E, which stands for early activity starts education. Uh, Karen put together a slideshow with an introductory video for our, our faculty, staff, and students. I've shared with our parents. It includes a wide variety of movement activities and games that teachers can use to start their day moving with their students. I know for a fact that Mrs. Lyons class uses it every morning because I see them through their window as I'm on bus and car duties. Uh, I'm answering, and I'm there acting like a, a crazy person as cars are passing by, dancing right along with them. Uh, it's just a fun way to get our students moving in order to settle their brains and bodies for a day of learning. Uh, the kids love it, and the teachers have enjoyed it. Um, and thanks to Mrs. Kenny, it's one, one more thing that, that we're doing here that's a, just a positive thing for our kids and our, our fitness. We are looking forward to a really great year at LGN, and, uh, again, I'm super happy to be here, and thanks for the opportunity to share this information with you.
Thank you, my mother.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I'm administrator, she's. I'm gonna stand because I don't, I don't say everyone at the podium, but I also don't want to sit down. Um, the call for advancement program offers high school students the opportunity to take college level courses across a broad, wide range of subjects, including math, science, history, languages, and the arts. These courses are designed to be as rigorous as first-year college classes, providing students with the opportunity to earn college credit or advanced placement if they score well and before signing AP exams. The benefits of taking AP courses extend beyond potential college credit. They help prepare students for the academic challenges of college, strengthen college application by demonstrating a student's ability to succeed in challenging coursework, and can even save on college tuition by reducing the number of classes needed in college. AP exams, which are offered annually in May, are graded on a scale of one to five, with scores three or higher often considered passing for college credit. The exams typically consist of a month combination multiple choice and free response questions. Norton High School enjoys a robust participation in the AP program with about a hundred and fifty-five students enrolled last year in courses across multiple subjects. Tonight, I wanted to seek the opportunity to recognize some of our current seniors for their outstanding performance in our AP program. Uh, so this is actually acknowledging the work that they did as juniors. With, so when you really think about it, um, the information and the scores that I'm gonna share with you guys tonight are all from, uh, when they were juniors in high school. Well, Shakti Arun took three tests and she received a five in US history, uh, which is amazing, and I will look up to this report. Uh, Amara? Oh, that's okay. Amara took two and received, uh, a five in English language. Uh, Jacob Berry, oh, Jacob. Uh, Jacob Berry actually took five AP classes as a junior and received a score of five in three of them. AP Language, Statistics, and US History. So incredible. I don't know how you're gonna top it this year, Jacob, but here you go. Congratulations. Come on, come on, our family, come on. How, what are you doing this year for courses?
Uh, AP now, AP, AP site, AP economics, AP literature, and AP.
What, why do you sleep?
Oh, and AP could be good, yeah.
Why do you sleep?
AP economics is two tests. Yeah. Alright, right here.
Congratulations. Alex, hey, please, come on, Alex. Uh, last year, Alex took four AP exams and received a score of five in her US history, all out of great, great scores as well. There you go, Alex. Congratulations. How's your personal this year, Alex?
Only two APs.
Alright. Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, James, okay.
You don't know where he is.
He's sleeping on James.
Living after this is a funeral.
So, um, this is gonna be like the Grammys when someone doesn't show up. I'm gonna do it this way.
He has videos, he has a video.
Well, that's wonderful. Um, sorry, everybody, you guys cheat here. Four, uh, AP tests last year, a five in bio and a five in statistics. So here is the award, but. Of course. Of course. Alright, and Zoe, yeah. Uh, last year as a junior, Zoe took four exams, all of excellent, excellent scores, and a score on a free, uh, five on a free health exam. So congratulations, Zoe. Is that any there? Why not Sam? Congratulations. And then finally, you have none nor a actress, and who's not equally with us, since she just graduated in my life, uh, four exams and a five on the AP stats assessment. So, um, I guess we'll hold on to this and make sure that our students that were at the class then, uh, get their awards. I think, you know, we try so hard, so we should recognize a lot of different things. Um, sometimes it's athletics. Um, I'd love to bring them into academics as well because that's so important for all of we do. So, thank you all so much for your coming out tonight, and, um, yeah.
Uh, just some two words, unbelievable. It's, uh, it's always great to kind of see what kind of goes on behind the scenes of people. Seeing our students, we sometimes recognize themselves, exactly what we all look like. Congratulations, unbelievable. Congratulations, unbelievable. I don't know if we have many people up here, because I'm certainly not. I'll just see.
What's that, two levels before?
It's very amazing, and we had a number of students that graduated last year that also would have been recognized. Unfortunately, we don't get scores until late in July, so I think it's very important to note that these guys are juniors, and what an incredible success story for all of them. Super proud. Keep working hard, like all going great, great places. So congratulations.
And we also.
Thank you. You don't have to say. Can I just mention that in addition to his AP tests in school, as Jacob also presented at the last year conference last week for adults, so like just phenomenal. Yeah, he presented, which was awesome. So, very excited. Thank you all.
Alright, next up is Sarah Village presentation.
And so we appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you guys once a year and just give an update on what we're doing with our grants. Here to give you an update. If I can handle it. Oh, sorry, Tom.
I do.
I said it was just a slice. But one. Okay, no, no. Okay, no.
It takes a teacher.
Fight one, be a happy one. Again, I'm good present, and I'm Amara. And for those of you who don't know, we lost our daughter in two thousand seventeen. She had a mental health problem, and we all went through her life. So in honor of the Sarah Foundation. So our mission is to promote wellness and to eliminate stigma associated with mental health in young people.
Do that magic again.
I expect to do it again. Okay, okay.
You're in the lobby.
Okay, so let me try to make this a little interactive. So we have a couple questions. So how much is the grant that we have been providing each year? And then let's see, what's that? Started out.
I'm gonna go with sixteen thousand.
Well, that's what you guys knew, so. But how much will we willing to provide?
We didn't provide yet.
Yeah. Twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty-five? Well, yeah. And then for how many years, how many times? Uh, I should know. Thirty-three?
Yeah, we started in thirty.
We started in thirty, yeah. And we did work with nine in the fourth year, who didn't write a grant. That is correct. That's pretty good.
Well, so just we wanted to go over some of the impact that we've been working together on. And we meet with Dr. O'Neil, and when they decide what we wanna do and then move forward. So the very first thing, you know, appropriate, and that's why Nicole came up to join us tonight, is two years ago, when he's like, if you do one thing, please pick up the grant for AP only. So that was our opportunity, and so over the two school years so far, we took, this year, forty-four students, two hundred and seventy-four counseling sessions, or a total of forty-five. So that's some real impact, helping kids out where they need it, and the program is amazing. Nicole can give you a little bit more insight from the ground up or on the front lines.
So, you know, we just started a call for our forty fifth student. Prior, I didn't want to do that, started this prior to the two years, we're covering groups for us at the school. So they started a grant that. So they're providing trust in groups at the school. We're doing a head mission here, but I haven't been there. We're not, I think that works. But yeah, we just started our forty fifth referral. It's been great. They've provided us with ten sessions per student that's referred. Some students use the entire grant, some don't use it the entirety of it. We can transfer them over to their insurance. Or we've had situations where our community has been to extend the grant to students where there's just a crisis or a dire need, and we're not able to do the transfer over to insurance. So I'm very hopeful, and I have to give Erin Shay major credit, because she's picked up a lot of the grant students for us.
Yeah, I want to say one of the other impacts is that the families and the students, especially the older students, are talking about. To each other about, like, oh, you've received referrals, I've received questions. Sometimes we use that in the grant, other times we're able to go straight to insurance. Or Nicole's not able to do that, we go to other agencies. But the point being is because of this, you know, it really matches the impact you guys wanted to have, which is the statement, right? Because like, oh, no, no, go here. Call Nicole, talk to Mr. Service, talk to your daddy's counselor, talk to your judgment counselor. They have, you got, it's been so beneficial. So it goes beyond just two hundred and seventy-four students and families. Really has gone out into the community, it's talked about in the circle. That statement is great, yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's me. Yes, you want two hundred and seventy-four students, but that lager impact. It's the world. I was feeling good. I'm gonna go back to this part. Last slide. So, um, we have the. So the grant for the counseling is any school, secondary, anywhere. But also is focused sometimes on, well, we've also looked towards the middle. We brought in a speaker engaged in five hundred and ninety students, and she talked about her own lived experience with mental health when she was an athlete, excellent student, and she just talked about not wanting to come out and and say the struggles that she was going through. So it was a couple of great sessions, or one for each grade, and just really about what you're all working fighting for. So that was really well received. Since you get to have old, old weight back in MS, and felt like I was a rock star. But, and then MS started a peace of mind club. So we have the active minds club at the high school, and Lisa Daley and kind of annoyed wanted to do something in the middle school, so they started a peace of mind club. Again, something peer-to-peer, students talking to students about, it's okay, they don't feel okay. Reach out. I think one of the other impacts in AP, yeah, I need to talk about, is that because of the work that these folks do, we have these community connections, right? And so the work that we did with the folks here led us to Jed High School, and we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant directly because of the connection they made to our high school. And we talked about those two hundred and seventy-four kids, I wanna make sure we understand those, that in all that paid off. So there's that piece, but we also were able to use it for other grants. We've got some testing grants, pretty significant testing grants around this work that I think have a lot to do with our ability to really say, hey, here's our connection within our community. You know, went to recruit some so forth. So it really has a larger impact than just what they're presenting. And the last slide just says any question, but one, yeah, so this is our fourth year, and one hundred percent of the money we raised, we put back into the community, so we're primarily supporting Norton equal twenty thousand dollars to those students. And when we called them, they answered the phone. Frank, we, they reached out, the folks are here, the office, work, our teachers and staff at the middle school right now. Did two of them provide five sessions, folks wanted, so that's one way. My other crazy idea was we were approached by Medway that they're doing, working with a group that's doing AI counseling for. So it's a new kind of visual intelligence program that they're piloting, they have assets, if you'd like to be part of it. It wasn't free, we did not, so I went to be shown, and said, what do you think? Let's try it out. That's, we always are, they're like, alright, give it a shot, let's see what happens. So they really are there for different things, and whatever we need, they're there to support us and our students and staff. Thanks.
Do you have any fundraisers coming up that you can share with us, Sarah?
Uh, yes, yes, Saturday, yeah, Saturday nights are, uh... So we, initially, when we started the foundation, we just asked friends who come with us. We probably have about four hundred, four hundred and fifty people that engage with us either through social media or our newsletter. Our daughter-in-law is our director of communication, she gets paid in hugs, thank yous. And then our son does the website. So we started with that, then last year, we had, uh, one of our board members, one of Sarah's friends, so she said, Sarah, I love to dance, let's do a Zumba fundraiser. Alright, lucky for the world, it was a bit sweat, but, uh... So we did that combined with a small gathering last year, and then this year we did Zumba a month ago, and now we have this gathering at Eastern Country Club on Saturday. And so there are lots of people from Norton coming in, two tables worth. So. Lisa and Tanya, right? Yes, yeah, Lisa and Tanya on the daily. Board, so, yeah, so that's it, but at any time, anyone can just go on to our website, Sarah's Village. And someone in this room did go on recently, and they did donations, so I appreciate it. But, um, so, yeah, that's, that's like a great way to do it. Again, one hundred percent of what comes in, we put back into the community. Any costs that we have, it's like the gathering or whatever, that simply might hopefully.
I don't mean so, but I'd like to, you know, enhance partnerships. As you have these events, you know, please reach out to us, we can kind of get it up to our community as well. I know we have a pretty good intern, you know, student attendance office.
It's why I went out to the entire.
The staff.
The staff, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it's been a great partnership. I know I've been with you guys since, you know, since it started. So I'd like to see, you know, more engagement, hopefully with our communities, and also definitely can get Sarah's message out there and support you guys, which supports us as well as our students. So it's a commendable effort by you guys. I've always been, you know, amazed that you model work and things you do for us, so definitely we can try and be paid and get it going. Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. And what else?
Yeah, and of course, I have more than I want to say. I'm typical of the only cries every time I relax. I'm just gonna say thanks. But yeah, just so grateful for this tremendous partnership. Our and Cynthia have been so wonderful to us, to our community, to our students. And I think we can't say thank you enough because the impact, definitely the impact, you know, forty, forty-four, forty-five students, the counseling sessions, the presenters that come in, the support that is given to our staff and kinds of, it's, it's really incredible. We thank you for taking this opportunity to share Sarah's message with us. And do it again.
Awesome.
Thank you.
How about some, how about some comments, Benny and the call come up?
Yeah.
Be missing that. Awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
So, we're gonna start on the agenda, President X twenty-five, what's on there?
So, um, thanks to the town for our AP knowledge offering, but like, that's the book. Um, our three days out, we spent a spare, was third has named three thousand five hundred and seven dollars. Um, the additional funds, eleven, a thousand five, thirty-five million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, ten hundred. Um, the report that I gave you tonight just showed an additional hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred two um, for the cap seven funding that we received. We have not included the additional, the three twenty-one that. All those lines, we allocated to homeless transportation, the tuition to parents, and the high school spend salary line as well. Um, three twenty-nine, two hundred and two, we'll allocate within the next week or two, and discussion.
Do we have any expenses coming in from that?
So those are like separate accounts that we're saving down, um, then through what we check that.
No, it's just your, so I don't have a account, I just, next of one.
So it'll be a totally different account instead of funds that, like, what we are is to say, well, we came to the town for, for, you know, capital projects as well. Um, one was the second set of payments for the UPM boards that we purchased last year for the middle school. Uh, the second item was the replacement of the shoe pot water heaters at North High School, which definitely happy, that's gonna happen. And then the third was a new athletic bus, so it's a smaller. Many of us, we currently have one, which is red, little sort of red rocket. Um, not that it covers it all, but it was only good for the time. Um, and we saved an incredible amount of money on athletic trips for smaller teams, shorter distances, field trips, special Olympics, everything. So we're super excited to have this other small bus, which is in, um, yeah, we've never appreciated it so much, so, maybe to the town that. Um, we were also approved for the fifty thousand dollars for schematic sign for the Norton Middle School group. So we will hopefully find out late next week if we were selected as part of this year's program. So fingers crossed, all around. I did want to mention a few things to you about the additional staffing, the three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars that was there. So we are going to be posting the permanent building subs with the start fee of eleven-four. Um, so those will happen hopefully tomorrow. Um, and I know that I had elementary principals earlier today, and they all have some people in mind for the most part, so those positions will get filled pretty quickly. Um, we will also start with the elementary specialists, retraining them to their twenty-three, twenty-four act to eat for the number four. Um, the one position that might be a little bit tricky is our librarian, as she's currently working the other half week as a reading specialist, so I'm going to work with her. Um, and then working with the Norton Teachers Association around the teacher leadership position. What makes the most sense in terms of, um, reinstatement and how can we do this in a way that makes, that makes sense for goals and things that need to be done? So hopefully we'll have an agreement with them quite early in November as well. Finally, we have the art, the music at Norton Middle School, and then the reading and math positions. After conversations with the Norton Teachers Association, I'm actually going to post those as well for some positions for January through June. And the rationale for that is, um, number one, it allows teachers that are in classrooms, um, you know, as a classroom teacher, just staying in their room for the year. And one of my biggest hesitations was disrupting learning for children that have a teacher report to make sure that we're trying to be as consistent as possible. Um, but having a long-term position that way at the end of the year, we're able to maintain these roles as we all hope we are, um, it will be posted through our regular union process, if we're interested, can apply to them, and go to that. Our current transfer process for the September of twenty twenty-four. From my perspective, I felt like that was the best option for us at the district to, as I said, maintain teaching awareness for all of our students, and also give our staff the opportunity to move into those roles if they so choose.
So, those positions, is that, uh, January second?
Yeah, the January second, sorry, yeah. Um, and then we also have some ideas about, like, if we can't find a map, if we have some, if we've got some idea, we can backfill another raise we've done. Um, there was a time when our Title One Grant was a little bit healthier than it is now, and what we did was we hired tutors, they were either retired teachers or perhaps teachers that were, had left the field from home, younger children, and wanted to work three hours a day, a couple days a week, and it was great because, you know, LGN teachers arrive at seven-thirty, but you really don't need to get started, like, going groups until eight. So when people would start at eight, they might work till eleven, they get the benefits. Um, so we're trying to be really creative, but how we're gonna do this this year. So, um, as I've said to all of you, I would never turn away money, we're thrilled to have it. I just wanna make sure we're doing it in a way that is, that maintains teaching awareness for our students, and it's still something. But super thankful to all of you for that advocacy and for the community as well.
Any questions, students? Other business? Sixteen, forty-eight hours?
What can I ask?
I got two things. One, I think someone mentioned it, the Norton Veterans Council, uh, doing the Veterans Day grade, that was obviously, uh, hard to promote, obviously, it's hard on Veterans Day, I may remember a weather. Um, yeah, maybe one year it's probably March or August, end of break. Uh, we go to the Yost School, kind of up the secondary entrance of Norton High, they got two, uh, uh, a border here, for you to come right onto the friendship. Um, that's that one. And then just a kind of transport, about obviously, I'm meeting on Monday night. Uh, you know, thank you to the community, obviously, coming out, voting, giving us a little bit of hope, maybe, and hope going forward. Uh, you know, hopefully, you know, same, we're trying to, you know, you know, with the free tax that we did have, trying to come back and, you know, bring it back to you, especially the top order pension, of course, thanks for that. Uh, thank you for hearing the, you know, the point of it, we kind of, you know, help guide that process as well. Good to see you, because we're good at becoming more helpful to you. Any other other business? Other, and Ken, what's to do?
Second.
A little quick.